Remarks. I understand that 124 Main has, you know, put the escrow down for purchasing the stoop. And that they've submitted a survey for with correct meets and bounds. Did you hear any of this yet?
Whether it's correct, I don't know.
Oh, with me, I'm sorry, meets and bounds. I do not, their other one had no meets and bounds, and this one at least has meets and bounds.
I do know they, I got the paperwork from Jeff on Tuesday.
It's a survey.
I have, my colleague's gonna be doing the closing on it.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a certified survey. So then. And then we should talk because you were gonna speak to another building inspector that you were, when I spoke to ours, I mean, there was not kind of a clear explanation on how ADA is enforced. Because when we look at these site plans and we're seeing reconstruction right on a commercial property, we obviously have to show that on the site plan, right? If it's germane to the site plan. Because obviously they're gonna, you know, there's a stoop, there's gonna be a ramp, there's gonna be some sort of treatments, all these things that the planning board looks at, which should be included on the site plan. So 15 Main came in, which is also a full reconstruction that is also going to buy the stoop. Right?
I see that.
So there, when we asked them about ADA, it was kind of a, you know, there wasn't really much of a response either. So I went and asked Jeff, and he said, well, he's really looking at state, you know, New York State codes, which is great, but I don't quite understand where ADA falls in. And what's relevant to this board is obviously looking at the site plan. So kind of how we should manage that. Because, you know, obviously, we're not code enforcement, but we need to do a site plan, and we obviously look towards general life safety, you know, overall. And obviously, you know, egress of ADA.
Right.
You know, is a life safety issue, so we have to at least show it on the site plan. So I don't wanna just kind of turn a blind eye. Obviously exposes the village if we don't, you know, this stuff documented. So if we could just talk about that at some point. Approval of minutes, we've got, you guys have the minutes in front of you, I gave you copies.
Which page is this you're looking at now?
What's that?
Two twenty eight.
Which eight minutes?
Uh, the two twenty eight minutes. There's another here, too.
Sorry, I thought you had.
Okay, let's go through the minutes really quick. Let's not say rejected the parking waivers. I think what it is, is that what the village board, I'm not sure what we said. Although I'm, it wouldn't be rejected, because what they, although I understand this thing, because that's kind of what it sounds like, is that what the village board decided to do is just not to take an action on them right now. Because they had concerns about the removal of the railing. Because obviously, it's village property. So I think we'll just say the board, you know. At this point, we'll say did not approve. Did not approve their waivers at this time. Requested one for Main, and the building inspector has issued a violation related to the, it's not to the construction, it's related to the demolition. Hopefully, there's no construction permit issued. Let's just change that to the demolition. Permit that has been issued. Good. Fifteen Main Street, change of use, site plan described a proposed change of use during the discussion. Just know that in front of the building, we'll see a commercial use and a residential use. The front sidewalks will be purchased from the village. The building extends to the property line, the ground floor is to be raised. For flooding, some windows, procedures probably closed off, those will be placed. Will the type of commercial use impact the number of parking waivers required?
I'm seeing on your, I think we talked about ADA on this one, too.
Yeah. Existing carport that accommodate one vehicle. The number of parking spaces, I, I, I think that was part of the ADA discussion, was she was saying that the owner, who also owns a property, you know, a block or so away, would offer parking for. We didn't discuss that, people kind of seemed interested in that. I forgot to mention, you can't do that. Residential has to provide onsite parking. There's no such thing as a residential site plan that doesn't have onsite parking. Right? So we couldn't approve the change of use because they couldn't accommodate the onsite parking. So I think it might have come out of that. So I'll redraft this a little bit.
Yeah, we went through a lot about the ADA, assistant doors on the side, or push the things forward and.
Yes, we probably should just have a general comment, just.
Was there room for one car or two cars?
One car, which is fine, because you only need one for a residence. So a residential site plan has to show one onsite parking.
They have nineteen feet or something, what we're talking about.
Nine by eighteen, right? Nine by eighteen.
It's a long thing.
And the challenge that they're having, or that they will have, is that they want to raise it up to come above the flood. They're only talking about twenty-four inches, which is not the flood line down there. It's about twice that.
Yeah, yeah.
But if they come up that, then obviously, then there's access to how you, how you'd have ADA access. It's such an elevation. So we talked about possibly, because obviously, the driveway has to be ramped to accept the vehicle, no different than, although the ramp may make, the grade may not be accessible, acceptable for, or it could be used for an assisted entry. So we'll, maybe what I'd do is maybe add some drafts, some stuff, and circulate it.
Because we also talked about doing away with, they talked about possibly doing away with the terrace area, where they were gonna have tables outside.
Yeah.
For, you know, using that as the access area. They didn't want to do that, but if they were forced to have ADA, that was another area that they would look at.
They also.
Yeah, and that goes back to the question, this force to have ADA. We're not forcing people, I mean, it's a federal statute. I just want to understand what our role is, as we try to nail down the site plan?
We also discussed the curb cut and the tree.
Yeah.
Right. All right, so why don't I do that, if anybody else wants to review the tape? I'll take the minutes. Be alert. Okay, I guess that's me. What else we got? Correspondence, the only thing we had come in, we had the updated package for fifteen Main. They had misunderstood, or not misunderstood, it was just a different understanding. Really, she thought she would come back tonight. I said, you're welcome to come back, I said, but what we had said was that you purchased a stoop. Their understanding was that it was relevant just to planning, just to HDRB. I said, no, no, obviously, the stoop gets shown on the site plan. Right, so we'd have to draw, you know, whatever's shown on the site plan, obviously, has to be part of that site. You know, and obviously, it has to be purchased and be owned by the person behind the site plan. Okay, okay. Correspondence, that was it, just the updated packet for fifteen. That's in the mailbox or right here for now. I'll go back in the mailbox if anybody wants to take a look at it. And that's it. So for new business, we have. Referral. By code enforcement, alterations and renovations to convert existing accessory building, barn, to a single-family residential structure. Approval from the planning board for a change of use, and a variance from the zoning board of appeals for front and side yard setbacks and lot size are required. Properties located in the historic district, most appropriate appropriateness will be required. Okay, so what we're asked to look at, the zoning board has also asked us to kind of do an informal, an informal review of the, you know, kind of the application itself. But obviously, formally, the building inspector has issued a referral to do a change of use on the structure, because the structure is currently approved for accessory use, the requested use is dwelling, right, as a residence. So there is no such thing as change of use, change of use is done by site plan. Right, a change of use is, you know, is papered by a site plan and a resolution. So the planning board would have to prepare a site plan. So we'll, I think probably it's a good time, if you're gonna introduce the project.
Hey, evening, Luke Hilper, I'm here with Sam Brod, with Fiona Property.
Hello.
Hi. And so I've provided a couple of documents for you, just as a byway of introduction of property, so that we can go over and talk through it a little bit more. So what this is, is this is a, it's a lot on Parsonage Street. A lot currently, according to the tax code, is vacant residential. And as vacant, I'm sorry, it's three twelve, which is vacant residential with a structure. And if you see here, the, what we're looking at on this survey in the front is, there's a two-story frame barn. The intent is to build a single-family home on this property. Originally, it was looked at as, you know, possibly preserving the barn or as much of it as possible to build the structure. Probably not going to be feasible to actually use the barn itself, it'll have to be rebuilt.
Correct, demolished.
Demolished and rebuilt. So with that update, I, my take would be that it is, it's in a residential zone, it's an R1 zone. It's a pre-existing non-conforming lot in that residential zone. As you pointed out, it was, it existed from at least nineteen sixty-four. It was on that tax map at the time. It was under common ownership, I believe, until eighty-four.
It was.
It was.
Yes.
So that's where the confusion came in as to that being when it was first divided, because that.
No, the confusion came in because it was introduced as a subdivided lot. And there was, there was notes on the tax card that indicated a conveyance. Right, a part of the lot. So that even looked like further evidence. There's a note, I think I gave it to Aaron, I'm sure he showed it to you. At the top of the tax card shows that the, you know, forty-eight by seventy parcel and the barn was conveyed to P&amp;M Perpetua, Mary Perpetua, the daughter. Back in eighty-four.
That's correct.
But it was not a subdivision. Because it's clear that they were pre-existing non-conforming. I called the county, I spent a lot of time on this, it was kind of like this goose chase, and nobody could. And my point to zoning was that we can't, we don't really, the starting point is the subdivision plat map and what's on that.
Right.
Right, there isn't one, right? But what that means then, is that you had a pre-existing non-conforming lot that was in common ownership at the point of zoning enactment.
That's correct.
On March seventh, sixty, oh, sixty-seven. So, right, and we can, and we'll get, and John can explain kind of what the law does and what the legislative intent of that, of that action is with the adoption of the zoning code in sixty-seven.
Yes.
But what was your understanding of the legal status of the lot? Because I didn't, there wasn't.
My understanding is that when we started this process, that it had been a, it had been a pre-existing non-conforming lot. We didn't know the exact date when it was subdivided out. And then when we wrapped the zoning board meeting, Jeff said that it was subdivided in eighty-four.
Right.
So we went with that number, because I didn't have any evidence that it was subdivided in eighty-four, and obviously, I didn't have that evidence, because there wasn't.
Right.
So, you know, my take on it is, is that it is a non-conforming lot. It's a residential lot. And even the, as I said, the local tax designation is the three twelve, which is a vacant residential with accessory structure. So I think with the, with that in mind, we would, we, because of the fact that it was under common ownership, I believe the code states that we would then need a special permit. But I don't believe that we need additional site plan approval. And that would, so I'm not even sure that a change of use is necessitated if we're taking down the barn.
Well, that's what's interesting, right? But obviously, we follow whatever code enforcement sends us, right? So code enforcement has referred it for a change of use, the way a type, the way a site plan, the way change of use is done is with a site plan.
That's correct.
Because it's not just a, you know, it's not just a letter.
Right.
Right, you know, we work off a plan. So that's what we've been asked to do. So obviously, we're gonna proceed until, you know.
Right, I mean, I guess his argument is it was an accessory residential, now they're trying to do a primary principal residential?
Right.
That's correct, I mean, essentially, we have an accessory structure on a, a lot with no primary use.
Right, I mean, I think the bigger issue, though, is.
Well, I don't know. With the merger clause, we need to talk about the merger clause first.
Yeah, that's kind of like the bigger issue.
We're glossing over the larger issue.
Right.
You know, whether a site plan review is required or not required, at the very least, the zoning board can always refer it over to the planning board for an informal.
Yes.
As part of the zoning board's review of the variance request. So to me, that's kind of a smaller issue. The bigger issue is the fact that you have this, you know, it's a pre-existing legal non-conforming lot, but in the village's code, it has what is called like a merger clause. So since it was under common ownership, at the time zoning was enacted, by operation of law, the lots have merged for zoning purposes. Even though the tax parcels remain separate, for zoning purposes, they merge because they need to reduce or, the idea is to reduce or to eliminate the non-conforming lots. Small lot sizes. So that's kind of why you're before the zoning board, because you're not grandfathered, and so you've made your zoning board application. And I think it's, and I think we kind of need to sit down and go through all the variances. But I think lot area, lot width, lot depth, and then depending on where the structure is, could be a front yard setback, off the top of my head.
There would be, potentially, we could do it without a front yard setback, it'd be very close. And I believe we would definitely need a, I'm sorry, we could do without a rear yard setback, it would be close, but the, the front yard would, we couldn't do both.
Right. And that would be the village's preference anyway. Nobody, our code, it was lifted from a Westchester suburban code, nobody wants a twenty-five-foot front yard. In fact, they're updating the code to more, to be more in line with what is in, what's in line with what exists.
Right, and I think that that was one of the provisions I was looking at, is, you know, there are two residential structures within two hundred feet of the property, so I think we would need to be, we would need to be in the median of their setback.
Yeah, I mean, so I think the.
But let's, I don't think we can really close the issue on this merger. Because with the merger, obviously, the protections of it being a pre-existing non-conforming are gone. Like, they're wiped out, because, because the legislative intent of adopting that zoning is to cure any non-conformity that you can, to some degree.
No, sure.
So the, so that was cured fully, actually in sixty-seven, because two roughly forty-eight by seventy lots are joined, right? That way then, and, you know, and that's, and as John said, that's common, right? Because what you want to do is you want to cure, obviously, small lots are a problem. You want to cure non-conformity.
Right, the idea is to phase them out. Over time.
Yeah, so what the action asks us to do is actually undo that. And in many, the way I see this being, you know, being in the planning board, is it's, you know, it's kind of this, you know, this virtual subdivision, right? You know, it's not a subdivision, the lots don't need to be subdivided, because they exist on deeds separately. But with respect to looking at the development of the lot, the lot is, is whole, as two lots. Right? So the one parcel contained the dwelling, the one parcel contains the accessory.
Right.
By orphaning it from its, you know, its dwelling, that doesn't make it a residence. It's never been used as, it's never been used as. So that's, I think, is the major challenge, is really, the village is then entertaining, creating non-conformity.
Right, and that's why they're going to the zoning board. So they have every right to appeal to the zoning board. I just don't think, this board really can, even if it had site plan review authority, and whether it does or doesn't, you know, we can argue or discuss that further, but they couldn't do anything anyway, until the zoning board acts, because they can't approve a non-conforming site plan.
Right, and that was our, that was my view with the zoning board. And they said, we don't.
I think I saw the emails. But I think it's good to get.
They just wanted your opinion, because.
Right, I think it's good to get, like, to come here and get an informal review, and get their ideas, so that way they can provide some feedback back to the zoning board. But I just, I don't think you should get too deep here, because, you know, the zoning board is the ones that is gonna really be making the decisions here.
Right.
And they, and you're told that they can refer to you for an informal review.
Right.
And a recommendation.
Right.
Or, you know, you can just say.
So as we, yeah, so I mean, until such time.
It's a yay or nay, or just no comment.
Yeah, until such times, we're not doing a change of use, we can talk about the change of use. We can't process a change of use, because the conditions can't be met for a conforming site plan. You know, we can talk about what's missing with respect to parking, I mean, having a residential, we have a serious parking problem in this village. To add a residence without a parking spot is, you know, is going in the opposite direction.
Right, so that, I mean, that could be another potential variance if you're.
And we did, and we did discuss that with the ZBI, that if we were not going to add parking, then we would need to update our application to.
Right, so I guess the idea for you guys is to kind of look, is there like a little site plan that you gave as part of.
Yeah, so are you, you're not.
Looking at, talk about the parking and setting of the site plan.
It should be the second page of the.
Issues or concerns that they may have, give them some feedback, so that when they go back to the zoning board, you know, maybe they can tweak things here and there.
I'm assuming that you were referencing the code when this was being put together?
Yes.
The requirements, so can you tell us why parking isn't part of this?
Just because of the size of the site, and we had a, we discussed the potential of adding a parking on, depending on where the house is sited, adding parking on the, I guess, the southern, the southern side of the property there.
And so the intention is to position the house right on the lot line there, at the, at the street and at the corner?
Somewhere close. What is the hash line in the center?
That's the setbacks.
That's the setbacks.
Oh, that's our, that's the.
Place it within that box, and you need all the setbacks.
Right.
And so you don't want to place it within the box, I see.
Just, well, ideally, no.
The idea is to get into the box, guys.
No, I understand that, but ideally, we would not be in the box, simply because visually, the, so if you look at the house, and if you look on the overview, the house that is on the corner of Pine and Parsonage is right along that lot line, and is very close to the rear lot line. It's only three point three feet from that lot line.
So you want to be chased away from it.
Yeah, if we move the house over to the middle, we're essentially creating a, what would appear to be more of a non-conformity. We're keeping it to the north of the lot. The lot to the, the lot that sits to the north, you can see their house is not as close to the lot line. So visually, it would actually appear more conforming and aesthetically pleasing. And that was the thought, and also because of the size of the lot, to maximize some of the open space there as well.
And what about the encroachments, the covered concrete patio?
That's what I was gonna ask, are those encroachments still there?
Looking at the survey?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a concrete patio, there's a garden, the survey.
The concrete patio, the wall is there, the concrete patio is, is not really there, that's right.
What is the pile of rubble of it, the snow? I mean, it looks like there is something there.
There's just, yeah, there's a pile of stone and rock there. It was gonna be used, I think, for something, but then.
Oh, is that right?
Then it wasn't, that was what I was told. It's not in any sort of structure.
And there's never been any claim of adverse possession? So adverse possession is basically, if somebody encroaches onto your property, and they don't cure it within the statute of limitations for trespass, they can actually take your property. So if anybody puts a fence on your property, make sure you tell them to get it off.
Or tell them they can leave it as a license, and then they're not adverse.
One of the, one of the, oh, go ahead.
Nope, that was all.
One of the questions I have in relation to parking on a practical level, as a resident nearby, as well as, you know, in terms of the parking issue, and meeting, meeting that parking requirement, is whether or not you would be open to creating a parking that is porous in the front? Because whenever it snows, you're gonna have to pull a car in, or you'll get a ticket.
Yes, winter parking restrictions.
So it's not, it's not, it's, and I actually have, you know, I have like an asphalt driveway that I barely ever use, except when it snows, because it's so narrow, that it's really hard to even fit my tiny car in there. So just from a practical perspective, I would, as well as a meeting the code perspective, I would just advise consideration of some kind of porous parking.
What do you mean by porous, sorry?
So you can permeable, permeable, so that, so that, I feel like the intent here is to sort of maybe preserve a larger green area, which I appreciate, you know, and I think that you, there are many solutions. They have this, there are eco-pavers that are like, pavers with supposedly vegetation grows in between them, varies out whether, for that success, although across the street from this property, someone has installed those kinds of pavers, a version of that, so you can look there.
The masonry ones, or?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're masonry.
You know what works is the plastic grid.
Yeah, the ones in the park.
Yeah, like what's down, down at the foundry preserve, under the gravel, there's like the little plastic.
Plastic cups.
So you can grow grass in that, and that actually works.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't have any aversion to parking. We just, we came into this with the perspective of, we're gonna have to go through three different boards of approval. Let's keep the thing as close to what it is.
Oh, I see.
As we can, and then if anyone asks us to change something, we'll, we'll take it as it comes. So if one of the things is parking, then we'll consider parking.
Was it, was it ever asked if the lot was buildable? I mean, there's a, there's a file that has several requests to, you know, for building permits that were all denied.
I think a lot of people were trying to tear down the existing building and put something else, like completely new there.
No, 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 not the, no, not talking about the historic, not, no, not talking about the historic aspects of it, but just the dimensions of the lot. You know, it's like a forty percent area variance, it's, you know, it's massive variances, and that's even before you get to, or I think, I don't suspect anybody was really, I don't, I question whether or not anybody was aware of the merger clause, right? And whether or not they were kind of operating from that, they were just operating from all these variances.
I think, I don't, I'm not aware of it going before a board previously.
Right, there was a building inspector denying.
We have at least one, our records are terrible, but the people that told it to you, Banker did apply for permit and was very formally turned down by the building inspector for the whole list of, I could share the letter with you if you want to see a copy of it. You know, very clearly stating out all the, all the variances that are gonna require, not at least much as like a forty percent area variance, you know, massive variances on the property, without touching on the fact that it doesn't really have any, it doesn't really have any pre-existing non-conforming, small lot protections anymore. And even applying the narrow lot provision, the narrow lot provision can't be applied, because that doesn't apply to parcels that existed and were in common ownership at the point of, at the point of zoning enactment.
Right.
So it's, there's a lot of challenges, so it's, you know, you know. And the clerk has told me that many, many people have called on the property, and he has informed them that it's, that he understood it to be not buildable.
We met with Greg Warner prior to Sam purchasing the property, and we did talk to him about it, and we also met with.
Yeah, unfortunately, Greg is, is near to the village.
Right.
You know, so I mean.
And we did, we did speak with him, we spoke with Jeff Phillips, I believe, as well, or, no.
Yeah, he's water.
We have water about.
Oh, like sewer?
About sewer coming in, water coming in. He explained to us where the lines were, and, you know, they both believed that it was very, it was doable. You know, obviously, there are, we're aware of the hurdles and the, what we'll need to do as far as variances, certainly. It's not an easy, it's not an easy.
No, 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 I spoke to the building inspector as well, I did not get the same impression, but, you know, but in fairness, he's new to the village, I mean, he's, and he's obviously not gonna get any opinion until he sees the site, until he sees, you know, construction documents.
Can I ask, well, you were referring to a forty, forty percent lot coverage, was that?
No, 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 not lot coverage, area variance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, you know, what is it, fifty-two hundred feet? Seventy-five times seventy-five, and we got forty-eight times seventy, so you're, you're twenty-two hundred, I think, short of like, yeah, we're doing something like that. You know, so it's a, it's a, it's not, you know, five, ten percent, like, you'll see area variances get granted. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty massive area.
I think on coverage, it wouldn't be an issue, because they are keeping relatively small.
Because it's tiny, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be six hundred, six hundred down, essentially.
It's just this footprint, right?
That's correct.
One by sixteen.
Do you have a bulk table as part of?
We do, we did submit a bulk table with, to the zoning board, yes.
There was a whole bunch of attachments attached from, so.
Attached to?
From, from your email.
Yeah, no, I don't have, I don't have a zoning.
Even though we're taking the building down for structural reasons, we're putting up exactly the same size building. The same needs, the same square footage, exactly the same, unless, of course.
Ten materials.
Ten materials, unless, of course, we're asked to change that for some reason. Like, we're not hard set on that, we're just looking for the easiest path through three different boards and approval.
Right.
What other lots are there, you know, in the one, of the size that have not been developed yet?
Well, it's not just not developed, it's that because they're joined, because they're under common ownership, then, you know, look, if there was, if this were to go forward, then obviously, the next person uses the decision to then say, you need to let me do this, right? That even though the, you know, the enactment of zoning in sixty-seven, you know, reduced the non-conformity or eliminated it in this case, you'd be recreating it, so.
Right, right.
I don't know if they're developed or not developed, or where the structures sit, you know, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna be as clean as this one, where the accessory is on one, and the dwellings on the other, and they're not, you know, they're not split the other way. But I'm, you can look at the tax, we have the tax map in there, and I mean, so there's a lot of small parcels, you know, but obviously, the whole point of zoning was to, was to phase those out.
Right.
Right, and because they create, obviously, the whole point of zoning and planning is these buffers, right? These living buffers between people, these safety buffers, where there are very little here. You know, and obviously, the neighbors are gonna be very concerned and very, very mindful about what goes up there. So I mean, and the village then has to respond to, I don't like it, and how did, you know, and how did this happen, right? Because that's what the village does, and so ultimately, the, you know, the risk goes up to the village board with respect to, you know, either current or future owners, saying that there's an issue. Like, say there's a, you know, stormwater management issue that comes up, or whatever, that, you know, and the question is, well, really, well, why did you approve this? So I don't think it's just that. So I don't think it's just that whether or not they're developed now, it's that, I guess the real question in my mind was how many of these were merged and could be, and they could use this decision to un-merge them, right? Or to, or to talk about them, developing them individually. Because if you toe the line with this, then, then you've done just that, you've toed the line, right? And you've held the non-conformity, and you, you have, in my opinion, successfully upheld the legislative intent of zoning, right? The enactment of the village board at that time. If you, you know, it, it's a slippery slope when you, when you make decisions that cut against the legislative intent. So I think that the, it'd be interesting to know how many parcels exist that are already merged, right? For the purposes of zoning, but could then be discussed about being individually developed based on the decision. And that's really the risk that we run, right?
And actually.
You know, I mean, it's great, look, it's great to get, you know, to get things back into use, it's great to get taxes, but the decisions that we make here and in life, everywhere, they all have consequences, right? So that's really what we look at.
So are we being asked to contemplate this site plan now as a sort of, as a hypothetical? In the event that the zoning board grants variances, are there any things about this plan that we?
I, I think that's.
Is that sort of what we're being asked?
I think that's worth, I think that's worthwhile, I mean, in my opinion, if you're gonna do this, I will, I'll be very upfront, I would not do this because I think it creates so much precedent that then the village then has to respond to in the future. But if the zoning board would, the zoning board has the authority to do this or not do this.
Sure.
If they were gonna do that, my strong preference would be to maintain as much conformity as you can.
Yes.
Maintain the rear yard setback, maintain, go into the box that you don't wanna be in, maintain the side yard setbacks, park in the side yard, it's wide enough to park in, right? And the front yard setback is not an issue, nobody wants a twenty five foot front yard, they'd probably be fine with a five foot front yard, a ten foot front yard, right? And so, yeah, I think that's a useful exercise to kind of get to, to what your point is, which is, if we were, what would the best possible site plan be, assuming that variances are coming, right? I wanna be very clear.
Right, assuming.
Personally don't think they should, because I think that the village will then, we have a lot of smart folks in this village, and we have a lot of architects that kind of call the records, and so it's like, oh, look, right, look yourself, you're gonna, you may use this for another client a few years, right? To say this was decided, right? You know, and like, to Stephanie's point, how many of these merged lots exist?
Well, here's my question, is that sort of an exercise that we would ask the applicant to undertake? Because if they were to show that there are not that many, or are we assuming there are many? I don't know, I'm not sure.
I, I can, I can advise that, we certainly would look into that, I, I would look into that from my standpoint, because one, I wanna know how many, you know, I have to help demonstrate that we're not creating a precedent that will, you know. So we would certainly look into that, and also I would be interested in how many lots that were under common ownership in sixty seven, between sixty seven and.
Jesus, how would you even do, I can't tell you how long it took me to figure out this. It's like a part-time job.
Oh, no, I know.
The pay's off.
It's a full-time.
But you can pay.
Yeah, so, you know, we would certainly look to that, and I, I think, you know, the, um, the merge division in the code, certainly from the tax report, they, they weren't, and we would, there has to be a way that we can, we can call through that data. I think that, uh.
Be kinda interesting.
It'd be an interesting, yeah, it would be an interesting undertaking anyway.
My concern.
It would be good, obviously, to demonstrate the, the, the risk to the village, you know, I mean, everybody says, oh, we talk about precedent, we want to, and then it's not set when we don't wanna talk about it, that's not how this board operates. I mean, it's, it's really pretty cut and dry. And our job, I see our job as upholding the code and protecting the village's interest, right, which is what the code is, right? But if we're gonna entertain a site plan, Aaron just joined us, I mean, for the purpose of, are you familiar with like the discussion as far as these lots merging?
Um, yeah, from, from the emails and from what I've seen.
Yeah, so by operation of law, when lots are in common ownership at the point of enactment of zoning, the lots are merged from, with respect to zoning there one lot. So essentially the exercise is to create a non-conforming lot, right? Which is not something the village should engage in, you can decide on your board, you know, what you're, what, what direction you'll take. But at the point of merger, these were owned by the Tans, had been owned since nineteen twenty-three, were owned through, I think, eighty-three, when the, when the wife passed away. And so the, the legislative intent of that zoning was to reduce or eliminate non-conformity, it, non-conformity. It successfully reduced, it successfully eliminated the non-conformity of two substandard lots, right? So the exercise here is to then create non-conformity. I mean, we can, you know, I mean, I don't know if that's correct in legal terms, but I'm very clear on what, on, on, on the view of this. So I think that the villages, you know, that, that creates precedent for the village. Stephanie's question was, how many of these merged lots exist, how many undeveloped lots exist? There are small lots on the Butterfield Development, there are three small lots that are slightly substandard, cause it was part of the PUD. It's a planned unit development, but obviously if this decision were to allow, you know, serious, and these are serious variances, forty percent area variance, you know.
Also, would this suggest that, cause I'm looking at this, all these really deep backyards, and I'm thinking, well, oh, what if somebody decides they wanna sub lot their, you know, one hundred, the, the uber long ones? I mean, is, is that what this starts to do, it starts to?
Well, I mean, I think there's a big difference between creating a non-conforming lot and trying to build on a pre-existing.
But it's not pre-existing, non-conforming, that's what, that's what.
It's not anymore.
Right, but there was a separate structure on it.
Oh, sure.
Well, I guess, but that's, that's the question, and that's the.
It exists, but we're, but we're living in planning and zoning, right? And so for zoning purposes, it's developed, right? And you could, you could do whatever you want with the two lots merged, right? And talk about, and talk about lot coverage, talk about setbacks. Look, I, I'll tell you, it makes a lot easier if this barn were a house, but it's not, right? It never was, right, and there's no argument that it was ever lived in.
It isn't a pre-existing, non-conforming.
It has frontage, so, I mean, that, you know, if you, we tried to, you couldn't do like a flag lot, cause I don't think your code permits flag lots.
I think we should say shouldn't, twenty-six Rock Street, it had no access.
Hmm, oh, the three bays.
Well, that was never approved.
That subdivision.
That was never.
It sat in this board for over a year before, before I took over the board, and said, this, we can fix this, take it to the attorney.
Never approved.
But I, I agree, that, that may be, that's true, but, but it also is a, it exists now, and it's non-conforming, and so that kind of creates this reference point. And so I'm concerned that if, if we, if we, if this is approved for development and it start, people start talking about it, like it's this non-conforming lot that can be developed, that does suggest that non-conforming lots can be created and developed if people find favor with the zoning board for various reasons, I, you know, for setbacks.
Well, there's, there's five factors the zoning board's gonna have to consider, they're gonna make the ultimate decision.
Right.
Uh, and they have to apply those five factors, which may work for one lot, but may not work for other lots.
Self-imposed, the self-imposition factor, right? Or the self-created, the self-created factor.
The best thing would have been, hey, is this lot buildable, should I buy?
But under the statute, even if it's self-created, which it almost always is, it doesn't necessarily preclude a zoning board from granting a variance, the five factors is balance.
Right, right, right.
You could have, you could actually have two, three factors against you, and two factors in your favor, and if the board feels like those two factors are greater.
That's interesting, I thought that you had to get, I thought it had to be.
That's for a use variance.
All or, all or nothing.
Use variance is all or nothing.
Yeah.
For an area variance, it's balancing.
It's zoned for residential use.
So you take the benefit to the applicant as, as balanced against the detriment to the neighbors and the community.
To the overall neighbor, and that's really where I think the crux of it is.
And does it have to be detriment, I'm sorry, just, I need to keep going.
I don't know the exact language you're gonna ask.
But then going to the, the question of the detriment to the neighbors, is it just neighbors in the immediate area?
Well, that's how you can call it detriment, the impacts, what are the impacts, right? I mean, it's impactful, everything we do, and this is very impactful.
But I guess I'm, my question here is, do impacts extend to the precedent that they create? Like the impact of, like, say, what is the impact of perhaps saying, oh, no, you don't have to have parking on site?
I mean, the zoning board, you know, as a zoning board, you can't just deny something because you're afraid of setting bad precedent. So, you know, you have to look at the five factors, look at each, each property and each application is unique. Application, and, and you can't deny something now because you're afraid of something else happening in the future. At the bottom line is, though, it's, it runs through all the minds of every board member, whether it's you guys or other boards I represent. So it is a factor, but that cannot be the sole factor. If your only reason is, I don't like set, I don't wanna set this precedent, that's your only reason, then that's, that's.
Which would, which is certainly not your only reason, because there are so, there are monumental variances, right?
Well, there, there are significant variances, but, you know, it's a sure number standpoint. But, you know, we consider those variances in looking at the whole community, and specifically the area around here. And when you're talking about a forty, you know, forty percent reduction in the lot, if you look at, you know, I, I went through and did the math today and looked at all these other lots, and I can tell you that we're far from the smallest lot, and actually much more in line with, you know, the lots in this area, obviously this one is significantly larger. But, you know, this one is, I can give you numbers, it's more for the.
Hey, it looks like the, the Girl and Hoover rooms, right? It looks like their neighbors.
Yeah, it's, it's more for the, the zoning, uh, for the zoning board, but specifically the, you know, lot coverage is very consistent with that. Uh, I'm sorry, the lot size is very consistent with a lot of the properties in that.
Understood, understood, but obviously, that's not the intent of, of the zoning enactment, right? Is to kind of phase that stuff out and to, and obviously to allow for standardized lot sizes, right? So if, if, if we were talking today and doing subdivisions, we couldn't create those lots.
Right, but, but zoning, you know, for the, for the best and highest use of the land and for the community, and, you know, having a, a broken down old barn versus a, you know, single-family residential structure, I think that's a, there, there's some balancing there as well, I think. But yeah, that's, that's for, that's for a different time, board, probably, but, you know.
Alright, so I think, I mean, as an exercise, I think we would just kind of go through what we would wanna see. I mean, my, my feeling is that if you're gonna do this, that you would try to, you would try to keep as much conformity as possible. Because that way, if people don't like the impacts, current or future owners, you can at least speak to, it has a legal side yard, it has a legal rear yard, the front yards are always reduced, and the street's not gonna sue, right?
And that's in line with the zoning board has to grant the minimum variances, the minimum amount and the minimum size variance.
Yeah, and I think this, I, I mean, I kind of feel like this, this is kind of hiding behind this, you know, this veil of historic preservation, frankly, that, you know, this, we need to be here because the barn's there, I don't, the barn's coming down, right? So I think that if you're, you're really redeveloping a site, and if the, if the, if the zoning board is gonna entertain that and all these variances, that I think that, I, I don't, I, I think that, you know, putting a house on the sidewalk, right? With absolutely no setback has, has issues, and it's really kind of a, it, it, it's not really what's driving the bus because the, the, the structure's not gonna be saved, it couldn't possibly be saved, it would be difficult to save it as a barn, right? It would be impossible to use it as a residence, it has no foundation, it has no, you know, and it's, and most of it's fail, right?
And, and the.
It's not that old, it's thirty-five, I mean.
I was there in, I, well, some, I put a map in there from nineteen twelve, something was there in that exact location.
Oh, is that right? That's funny, cause it's on a tax card, it's a thirty-five improvement.
It's the, uh, one of the, one of the maps in there is.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, since nineteen twelve, it's showing that corner with a, with the barn there, you know, it's.
Maybe you should, maybe you should save it.
There you go, alright, well, thank you very much.
Save it for the stunks. Uh, can I, I, I just wanted to make one quick, um, uh, addition. If, if, if you are, I mean, obviously it's gonna be a balance of factors that you're considering, including definitely like bringing it maybe more into conformance with the setbacks, however, the parking issue. Cause if it's right in the middle.
You can still park in a side yard, right?
Will there be enough room?
This neighbor's, this neighbor, Valtich's, um.
Valtich.
Valtich?
Valtich.
Her, her lot, her driveway's right here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you were to park in the side yard, say this has a, you know, ten, fifteen foot setback, whatever it is, and there's a side yard here, I, I cannot see my way to creating a residence with no parking. I, I, of all things that we would do in the village, you know, this is kind of, we, you know, we talk about parking more than anything, but
Especially when you're not in front of you, yeah.
And then as, as Larry's telling, you know, you have parking restrictions in the winter, you have a lot, many, many days to not be able to park there.
Yeah, so anyways, just as you're, as you're, um, thinking about where you're gonna shuffle it, think about the parking.
Factor of parking.
Factor of parking.
Yeah, obviously the impacts would be far less for the neighbor to the right, because the neighbor to the left, you're parking up against her, literally.
Yeah.
She walks out of the house and her sidewalk, which is not, not very wide, is her lot line.
Yes.
You know, so it's a, it is a real precarious, um, you know, and so I don't.
And that was, you know, again, that was part of the reason for trying to get as close to the northern property line as possible.
But I think you're just trading one problem for the other, and ultimately, at the end of the day, if the village, as John was saying, do the fewest amount of variances as possible. You know, to say that all these variances are required to save the, you know, the, the historic barn that is going to be demoed, it does, it's not a very compelling, I mean, so, if you ask, you know, I think what the planning board does, obviously, is we look at, I, I would think that the, that the best way to do it is to reduce the conformity, the non-conformity to the greatest extent,
Right.
Um, which is to center it, and the good news is, and I, you know, shared this with Aaron and some other folks we were speaking to, is that since you do want a tiny house, that, that it is possible to come up with under three hundred percent lot coverage. The driveway is not lot coverage, correct? I don't believe it is in our code, I don't believe it is, yeah.
No, I think you only have building coverage, I don't know if you have a lot coverage too.
Yeah, we have lot coverage.
It's called lot coverage, yeah, but I don't think driveways are considered.
Permeable, it might not count towards lot.
Yes, definitely it's permeable, which I think you'd wanna do anyway, I mean, you could even, I mean, I'm gonna do it up at the Lake Cottage, that plastic grid that you grow the grass through, it's really working, they have it at the train station.
Yeah.
Cause that cement stuff didn't work, it just, the grass just died, I think you could get some water.
A lot of people just also prefer the new gravel.
Yeah, yeah, that's true too.
It's occasional, yeah.
So that being said, the only thing that we're really considering from our perspective as a variance would be the front yard.
Well, I mean, obviously, we don't consider variances, we're asked to look at the change of use, and we can't do a change of use.
Right.
So I think that if we're gonna.
But, yeah, I thought, I thought the exercise was to kind of give them some kind of guidance.
Guidance for a segment, yeah.
In the event that we.
Yeah, so these are just general site plan comments that you're giving them?
Yeah.
At some point, once we get a list of all the actual variances that are required, um, then it should formally be referred back to you guys. And he's gonna build his record, I'm assuming, he already talked about comparisons to other lot sizes and setbacks and, you know, he'll put a table together and stuff like that, so he's already kind of working on that stuff. So that way, basically, you're gonna make a supplemental submission to the zoning board, you should also copy, you know, we'll copy it over to the planning board because they, under the code, they can submit and advise a report.
Right.
Um, to the zoning board, so this is just now like you're kind of focusing on site plan issues.
Yeah.
Um, the zoning board's gonna, they're gonna be, make the ultimate decision on, on the variances, but they're going, you know, you guys are gonna be issuing a report.
Okay.
And one of those variances will be a variance that, um, granting a variance that declares the site to be.
Unmerged?
A pre-existing, non-conforming.
It's just, it would just be a lot coverage, uh, I'm sorry, lot, um, lot size, lot area variance.
How do you not, how do you not paper the fact that your, that the merger clause is not being?
Because then the variance is a variance from saying lot size, this is a small lot.
Area variance, they're gonna be in line, okay.
So the, the zoning board would theoretically be trumping.
Okay, so it, and it all flows from the area variance, right? So the area variance has to be granted in order to, for all of these other, this cascade of.
That's gonna be the, the most, the first variance, if you will.
So I would just kind of focus right now on, like, you talked about parking, you talked about the location of, of the house, any other site plan issues that you have, so that way when they make their supplemental submission to the zoning board, they can kind of clean up their plan a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, eventually you will get that information with his, you know, with his analysis.
Does this, okay. Okay.
Yeah, so I think that.
I, I'm just, I, no, I'm just, I'm struggling, because, because, and, and it's, cause I, I, I live on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, it's smaller than this.
It was not merged.
But it was not merged, it was, yeah, um.
These remain separate.
But, uh.
Up for the point of zoning.
We have some pretty big lots in our community that are yet to be developed, and you're saying, no, you can't think of that, you can't, and I think about the densification of the village and what the current, what our current zoning code does for the community, and did for the community when it was enacted. And also looking to what the code update committee is doing to try to sort of bring into alignment this, you know, kind of outdated nineteen, late sixties code into, to be more reflective of, of what our village looks like. What this is doing is kind of, I don't know, I, I feel anxious about the future of lot sizes, the size of my lot, the size of this little lot, and I'm, and I'm really sorry that we're, that I'm so wound up about your application, because it's not really about.
And I think, and I think to both of your points and John's point, you know, that can't really be the language, but the language can certainly be, we're here to enforce the code, and the code is very clear on this, right? Why you have concerns about that, right? Or, I mean, I don't think that really needs to be voiced, right? But I think that it's very clear what the legislative intent was, was to reduce the nonconformity, right? And to eliminate it wherever possible, right? Which it successfully did here. So I think that's your point, is that then where does that, where does that go, right?
But you can't.
In future.
You can't argue, sorry, I didn't rephrase.
No, go ahead.
Are you finished?
No, go ahead.
Um, you can't argue that you can develop a larger lot based on this, because.
No.
No?
Why?
I'm, that's what, I'm trying to think.
That's what I'm thinking.
I'm not entirely convinced.
No, I'm not sure.
I know a couple attorneys who have been in front of us, they would argue that you did a subdivision, right? You know one, that, you know, that would say.
If this is a subdivision.
They would basically say, look, you created this, right? Isn't that what you did, right? So give me a, give me a small lot.
Well, unless you create one for me.
Again, of course, you need access, you need all those things, but I mean.
Right, I mean, chances are, the applications would have to be exactly the same. You can always distinguish the applications.
Would they?
Yeah.
So.
And I don't, I don't know that we want to dwell on that, I think we really want to just kind of talk about.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the zoning board, I mean, the zoning board would, if, if, the big if, if they do decide to approve it, they should really craft a decision that shows how unique this is.
It's a million warehouse statements.
Yeah.
If it's written.
So, I mean, that's how I usually get around the whole concern about precedent, is just.
Or your recitals.
Yes, it's very focused, and the reasons for the variance, if it is granted, is just based on these specific factors.
No.
Chances are, you're never gonna get another application that's gonna have those same factors. I mean, it happens.
Like, bad luck.
But, you know, it's one in, one in a hundred.
That's not great odds.
I mean.
Well, it doesn't have to be vacant.
What I'm wondering is if.
They don't have to be vacant, they have to be merged.
If the language of the approval, and I understand this is not really our role, but just because we're having this conversation. I was like, what if the language of the, if there were to be an approval? Could, could someone argue that the language of that approval should stipulate that the approval is contingent or dependent on the fact that this, this, I don't know what, the size of the building or something?
Yeah.
That would include future.
You know, the number of bedrooms, you know, two bedrooms, size of the structure.
Other limitations that are sort of integral to the massing.
That's true, and that's, that was my point about keeping as much conformity as you can, right?
That would be part of it, yeah.
Because you can do, you know, a six hundred square foot footprint.
Yeah.
With all the, with all the proper rear yard, side yard setbacks, give a front yard setback, which everybody wants anyway, and the street's not going to complain, the street's not going to say they're impacted, right? And it, and it follows the rhythm of the, of the street anyway. And that way, then you can say, listen, you don't like it, but the village followed their code with respect to setbacks. Because setbacks exist for, you know, obviously for life safety, they also exist for, you know, for buffers between living spaces. And you can say, you know, assuming you can move past the why did you do this? I think if you get to the how did you do this, you can say, you have a conforming side yard setback, you have a conforming rear yard setback, there's a parking space, right?
Or it might not be conforming, but it's close to conforming, you know, I guess, oh, the back.
Well, if you put the area variance aside, right?
Yeah.
The area variance is, is aside.
The setback could be conforming, yeah.
Do all, yeah, because, because, and that in and of itself limits it to tiny houses.
Exactly.
Right?
Yeah.
Um, that's even smaller than your house, Stephanie, right? I mean, six.
This?
Yeah.
It's a little small.
Yeah, yeah, it's small.
Yeah, yours is a lot smaller.
It's got a giant.
So I mean, that in and of itself creates a limiting factor.
I didn't realize I live in a tiny house, my house is eleven.
It says, it says, a proposed fireplace is additional to existing barn square footage.
Because it's a, because it's an outcropping.
No, it's a.
Because it's an outcrop.
Is that a chimney?
Yeah. It's a fire chimney, yeah. You, you should have.
Got it, I'm happy, okay.
So I think at least then, when you, if anybody wants to talk about the impacts, the, you know, the village and whoever else needs to respond can say, conforming side yards, conforming rear yards, conforming parking.
Right. So what, what we're saying is, if they have a parking lot that doesn't create any parking problems for anybody.
They have to provide one site, one space on site for a residence.
And then if they are away from the sidewalk, instead of sitting right in the middle of the sidewalk, and then if they keep their current size, the barn size, and then, you know, wherever around them is all fitting the code, then as far as the planning board is concerned, we can't, we can't say yes or no.
Well, we're not saying yes or no, the, the zoning board is asking for an informal review.
Yeah.
And so when the planning board looks at site plans, the only way a change of use can be processed is through site plan, right?
Right.
The question is whether or not it requires a change of use, because it, we don't typically look at residential. The reason it came here is because it is so unusual, right? And that that's the way code enforcement saw it. So what we're just kind of doing is saying, you know, if these variances were all to happen, what information could we give you that would create the best possible site plan, right?
Right, so again, you're gonna have another crack at this, so to speak, when they make their supplemental submission, when you're, the zoning board's gonna ask you for a formal advisory opinion on on the variances itself. And then, I don't know, whether the site plan review is required or not, we'll cross that bridge if and when we get to it. But, so I just, I think they just need some initial feedback, I think.
I, and we certainly received a lot of feedback. So I certainly understand where, you know, where things are coming from on that standpoint.
Are there any, like, fencing requirements?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, if there are any sort of, you know, fencing, screening, things like that you'd like us to consider in addition?
I don't.
It's not.
I think they're gonna be, I think they're gonna be more impactful than none, I think that, you know, I mean, I think that if you were to create screening, you know, three feet from, you know, from the edge of, you know, Gerland and.
No, I agree with you.
I mean, I, I, you know, the other side would be fine, but you don't really need it, because there's quite a bit of distance, right? Because it's her driveway, which is quite wide, you're gonna have, if you were to have a ten foot set, side yard setback.
And she has some screening there anyway.
Yeah, she's got, she's got a lot of trees.
She's got a lot of trees.
But, um.
But like vegetative screening, like we could say, consider vegetative screening rather.
But even that, I mean, how narrow can you get? I've been fighting that for like, I've been trying to get a narrower.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
Because you have no width, right? If you could get something enough to grow.
Well, are we talking about the screening in the context of the house being in the middle of the?
Right, like, if if it does come back to the being in the middle of the lot, like, and it starts to feel like it's closer to, well, there's already buffer, there's buffer with Howell already.
I mean, it may be, yeah, I mean, it may be interesting to see whether or not they would, they would, whether or not the owner of thirty-six parsonage, thirty-six pine, rather, would prefer some sort of screening.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll find out, I'll be caring.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll tell you exactly what they think.
I don't.
Well, that's why we like to.
And I don't think, I I personally don't think it makes it more impactful, I think that it's just, it's, it's, it's all close, whether it's another ten feet or let ten feet, I mean, it's, it's all very close. Um, and to kind of talk about being bound by this, the footprint of this old barn that's being torn down, I think is not really, is not really terribly compelling. I mean, the the plan is clear to tear it down, I understand that, and frankly, it, I think that's fully defensible. I mean, I think, I don't see how you could make it into a residence. That being said, then it doesn't make sense to follow that thread through and say, but that's where, so that's where this house needs to be, where the barn was. Or even the massing for that, man, or obviously, other than the fact that you want a, you want a small house, right? So.
This is residential use.
It's residential use. Now, I understand for both the neighbors, they both told me, they were told by, I believe you, that it's gonna be rented. Is this, is this a, a long-term rental, I hope?
It'd be a long-term rental, Marcella had said that her.
My parents.
Her parents will.
Your parents are gonna live in this house?
Most likely, yeah. Yeah, because they live in Florida, and I live here now.
And they're gonna do the reverse snowbird maneuver?
Yeah.
I see, okay.
Okay, um, yeah, so I think that's really, I don't see if I have anything to add, I mean, I think to the extent that, that you keep the conformity, the nonconformity to a minimum, you can answer the questions of impacts and I don't like, and the things that come up. I mean, that's what we deal with, I mean, you know, I mean, that neighbors come in, and it doesn't have to be the current owner, it could be future owners, it could be, it could be anybody. So I think that obviously, that it's completely reasonable to have a sun, a front yard variance, nobody would want a twenty-five foot front yard, right? And the rhythm of that street is much smaller, probably ten feet, you know, there's some that may be closer, some that are much further, but, you know, the one next door probably does have a pretty good sized front yard, she's setback, probably a good fifteen feet.
Valtich, yes.
Yeah, but, um, but I think somewhere in between there, and then you can at least say, and and to your point, it starts to limit how many else, how, the likeness of this application to others, is that, yeah, but it's, it's only twenty-eight percent lot coverage, right? Can you get down to twenty-eight percent lot coverage on this? I mean, on many of these, you're definitely probably more than twenty-eight percent lot coverage. You know, you're probably at forty, maybe more, what were you with the variance?
I think I'm, I think I'm, I might be like thirty-one, or my, I might be twenty-nine, but.
Really?
Is that right?
I'm across the street.
I can do some quick math.
Probably sixty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I bet you, I have, my yard's smaller than this, and I have no, no, nothing in the front, and there's a garage in the back, I mean, it's, I I might be seventy percent covered, it's significant, but it's right on Main Street here, so it's not uncommon, but.
Right.
Okay.
All right, and just be warned, you know, planning boards and zoning boards don't always think alike, so.
Understood, understood.
Well, that would be your hope.
I appreciate it.
I think somebody might. I'm thirty-three and a third.
That's your coverage?
Before your addition.
Actually, that includes the addition.
Oh, it's keeping the same footprint? Okay, so, very good. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Can you clarify a couple of things?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
So, as far as the lots being merged, that only affects whether the narrow lot rule applies?
No.
What the narrow lot rule is.
There's a narrow lot rule that you can reduce, you you have to maintain four inches per every foot, four inches of side yard, right?
Oh, yeah, there's the exception to the substandard lots, where they let you, to give you more flexibility. If that was a legal, pre-existing, um, substandard lot, but here, unfortunately, because of the merger clause, they don't get that protection.
So is there anything else affected by the merger clause as far as the zoning board is concerned?
Just everything.
Right.
It's that it's, it's a merge, right?
It ends up being a lot size, though.
So what it is. I understand it's a small lot, I understand it's not too lot.
It's not, no, no, it's not, for your purposes, it's one lot, they're merged. For your board, those lots are merged.
Right, but they're looking at it as far as building on that tax parcel.
Right, and that's your variance, right? So to the extent that you consider an area variance, it then goes and undoes the legislative intent of the zoning, right? The zone, when zoning was enacted, to try to reduce nonconformity, and try to kind of phase it, phase these things out, and not have seventy percent lot coverage and fire transfer and all that.
He gotta go through the table, because he need, you gotta go through the bulk table to figure out exactly all the variances and what the percentages are.
Nobody else has to, I'm trying to understand.
Is Matt suggesting that the first variance would be to undo this merging clause?
No, I don't think he has to do that, I think.
Okay, so, so there's nothing to stop the applicant from applying on the small sized lot related to the merging clause, is that?
No, he would just be applying for the variance from the lot area.
Right, so it's very small.
Be trumping the merger clause.
But by, but by the, but by the zoning board taking that action, they are, that is what they're doing, by granting the first hurdle, which is the area variance of forty percent.
Right.
You are, that's how, that's what you're doing.
You're, it's a, it's like a built-in variance.
Yeah, I mean, it lost its protections as a small lot, because it was commonly owned, and they, and they do that everywhere, right? Because you want to phase out small lots.
But it's still.
It's a lot for deed purposes, right? But he's, he's not, he's not a tax man, he's, you know, he's the zoning board, right? So for his purposes, clearly, it's, it's, it's one lot, right? They're merged. So the question is, if you're gonna take a portion, if you want to create a portion, what's up?
It's still two lots, though.
For tax purposes, right.
But they are two separate lots.
Yeah, they've always been held on deed. They've been held on deed by the TANSA, there's no exclusion whether or not the deeds are, you know, whether or not the deeds are separated, whether or not the deeds are.
So that just comes into the, to the variant, to the lot size variance, so it doesn't get the pre-existing nonconforming protection.
Exactly.
But it's still a lot.
No, we all, we're all in agreement, the lot exists, right? Nobody's, nobody's questioning the lot.
But you keep referring to them, them as one lot.
For zoning purposes, they're merged.
Right.
My second question is.
Well, what does merge mean to you? I mean, what?
No, no, I, I understand what you're saying, but by, but by them being merged, they lose the protection, but they, they are, it still is a separate lot.
Tax parcel, yes.
Oh, yeah, they're separate tax parcels.
That's where the change of use is needed for, to build a house, or?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I have to talk to the building inspector, why, you know, what their rationale was as far as the change of use, but before you got here, I was saying, you know, that's kind of the secondary issue, because without the variances, you know, you, there's really no reason to go on for the change of use. So I think the idea is to focus on the variances, and, you know, if they're granted, then we'll have to kind of circle back on this whole change of use and whether site plan review is required.
And you don't think it would be better to do the, do it the other way around?
No, because they can't, they can't approve a site plan with all these nonconformities.
The way a change of use is processed.
We can't even investigate whether it needs a change of use?
I mean, we could, but I, I, again, if 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 the variances aren't granted, then it's kind of a waste of time and money.
Well, I mean, the opposite is true also, it's gonna be a waste of time and money to get all the variances processed of.
Right, but that controls everything, that's.
That's the gating issue.
Yeah, that's, that opens it up.
I mean, the gating issue is the merger, right? That's really the big.
The variant, like, the primary variance, where, um, where the variance, the variance the applicant is applying for is in effect something that says, I need you to consider me for zoning purposes exclusively, even though for tax purposes, I'm already, you know, freewheeling and autonomous, for zoning purposes, I need you to document and approve my small.
Construction on a substandard lot.
My small size. Construction on a substandard lot, is that, okay? And I think that goes to the.
Size and quality.
What's that?
I said, substandard and size, not quality.
High quality.
They're all high quality, yeah.
Small, small and statured.
Yeah, lots to consider, pun intended.
So from a zoning perspective, somebody else owns the property? Or somebody else has?
Oh, it's not ownership, it's not about ownership at all, it's basically just that, what, and the, the, the intent of zoning is to, when they enact zoning, is to try to reduce that nonconformity. So they take advantage of any opportunity where they can. This is very big in like lakefront communities too, where, you know, they'll, they'll subdivide a property and create all these postage stamp lots. And then when the Adirondack Park Agency came in and overlaid, you know, six million acres, they said, if they're all owned by the same family, they are now considered one, right? And you're, and you're locked down, and up there, I can tell you, this would not go anywhere, right? But the Adirondack Park Agency, different than the planning board, is written into the state constitution. But so that's what they're trying to do, is really just say, okay, small lots are not really what the goal is. So at, at that point in sixty-seven, let's, let's eliminate as many as we can. And what this did was eliminate that as a pre-existing, nonconforming lot, and for purposes of zoning, not ownership. These things have always traveled on separate deeds, you know, separate, you know, what, what, so for purposes of zoning, they are considered one lot, right? So what, what the zoning board is being asked to do is on a portion of that lot, to then create a variance to, which essentially creates, creates the smaller lot.
This doesn't make any sense to me, is there any, any paperwork or something that shows we have to consider the Gerland lot and their lot as a single lot? Where can I, where can I have the?
It's a merger clause.
Yeah, it's in your code.
It's in the code. It's in the zoning chapter.
Even after the lot's been sold?
It's not ownership.
It's been slid, it's been sold. It's been slid, it's been sold.
Yeah, I mean, your code's a little different because it's, it says at the, at the time zoning was enacted in nineteen sixty four, if they're owned by the same, if two non-conforming lots are owned by the same person by operation of law.
That are adjoining, yeah, that are adjoining.
Right.
That are touch.
Cause the idea is to phase out non-conformities.
That was the clear intent of zoning.
Some codes just say they just look at it as is.
I don't know what, I don't know, what did the, what did the Adirondack Park Agency do? Because you can't actually sell them separately anymore.
And I don't know.
I mean, that's probably the right way to do it because then you don't end up in this weird gray area of they're, they're one, they're two, right? It's, it's such a weird conversation to have, you know?
When was it sold again? In nineteen eighty four?
Eighty four, yeah.
That was the first time they appeared on separate owners.
Yeah, and all they did is on the, and I think what threw the clerk off is just a note on the tax card that forty eight by seventy was conveyed over to Perpetua on the barn. The improvement of the barn comes off the other card and goes on the other one, but it's probably, you know, eighty percent, you know, probably twenty percent good.
Was it sold within the family? No.
Perpetua was the daughter.
So it was sold within the family?
It was so.
I don't know if that's considered common ownership. I, I don't know. I think that's a break. I think that's a break in the chain of title, wouldn't you? That's not common. So the brother, the brother took the house, the daughter, the two daughters took the barn and the.
That's the same there.
Everybody, everybody, everybody.
Wasn't a good deal there.
Well, I thought, yeah, exactly.
I wouldn't stand for that.
Patriarchy. So the, everybody thought, oh, they just drew a line down the middle and gave half and half. That didn't even have to happen because the line was always there. Nobody ever recognized it because the TANSA had owned it since twenty three.
But, but in effect, what they did was created a non-conforming lot once that property was sold.
Yes.
I don't know, um, I don't know because they weren't in comp, no, I mean, oh, you mean, once it was conveyed in the, in the surrogate file?
Yeah, because this. This house is existing. The property next door was sold, so now this becomes a non-conforming lot.
You're talking, well, but what do you, but what do you?
When?
But, but when.
At the time of sale.
When the, when the original owner dies and conveys it to the kids?
Right.
Eighty four?
I believe that creates two separate lots. I think it just creates a mess. I mean, because then you got, you got people that say, like now, I want to live on my property, right? Well, it's, it's merged.
But you have two, two separate owners. One has a house on it and the other one has a barn on it. The one with the house on it in effect becomes a non-conforming structure.
No, the structure's conforming because it's, because it, because it's grandfathered in.
It's grandfathered in with the property.
Yeah.
On the tax roll.
Yeah, if you want to turn that barn into a house, then you'll have that conversation, right?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
Or if you want to turn that house into a barn. Sorry.
Now, what I'm saying is, this, this house and this piece of property.
What was that? That was Space Cal.
Why? Just kidding.
This house and this property becomes a single owner, right? This is a non-conforming structure.
Right, because.
Without variance.
Right.
Right? So we.
Which won't be triggered unless you try to do something.
Right, exactly, but, but they didn't do anything.
Right, nobody did.
Right, but.
Well, these people.
These are two separate owners.
These people were denied.
Yeah.
Were you aware that, were you aware that the seller was denied? Just curious.
Yeah, but not, not on, not on, we didn't go into the detail of what, what all they asked for. And, yeah, I, I believe he didn't go to, you know, he was just denied and didn't seek it. The story that we heard was that he, once that, once he got that step, he said, oh, he said, I'm not gonna live here anyway and just didn't do it. So that was, whether that's the true story or not, that was the story that was, that was told. That he didn't actually apply for any variances or anything. He just.
Did he, he applied for a permit and was?
He applied for an initial building permit and was denied, which we would have expected anyway.
I sent it to him, yeah.
So just, you know, based on everything there as we've talked about, you know, that was what we had discussed initially, like, you know, when he applies, we're gonna get denied, but that's the first.
And both the neighbors are aware that, because I guess Perpetua wanted to build as well as Sestino wanted to build. And I guess they weren't allowed to build either.
Okay, that, that is something we.
That's not documented in the file. Doesn't mean it did happen, doesn't mean it didn't happen, but just because it's not in the file, does not mean it didn't happen.
Sure.
I mean, because it could have also just been verbal. It could have just been a meeting with the building inspector to go over similar areas and they just said, well, I guess this is not going anywhere or, or whatever, so. Yeah, so I mean, it doesn't, nothing happens until you try to do something, right? And that's why we're here, yeah?
It's a mess, it's really a mess.
Yeah, yeah, no, it would, it would make more sense to keep them together and if the, if the kids.
Make more sense if the brother bought the property.
Or if the kids could have gotten, you know, could have gotten along, and I don't know if it's not getting along, you would have, I would have joined the lot, I would have joined the lots on title as well.
Right.
Yeah, you know, go to the assessor and merge them.
Yeah.
Okay, so what, what's next? It sounds like now the application.
They have to go back to the zoning board.
Goes to Aaron.
Zoning board gets this scalding hot potato.
He's so excited about it.
Thrill, yeah.
He looked thrilled at her.
It would be great if you could write up the summary of, of your, uh.
Oh, Jesus.
Discussion. That's why we sent it to you.
Okay, we sent it back to the zoning board. It'll be one sentence.
Well, you're gonna send, you're probably gonna send it back to them once they make a supplemental submission. And once you're ready to schedule a public hearing.
Oh, so you're saying our report will be after?
Yeah, the official report. You can give, give them a copy of the minutes. They should have, the zoning board should have a copy of the minutes.
Right.
Once they're ready, but.
Is, um, is the formal, uh, response from the planning board something that's part of the public hearing or?
Yes, it's.
Part of the record.
Part of the record, of the zoning. And they, they don't have to listen to you. I mean, you know, it's an advisory opinion.
Proceed at your own risk.
Right.
Alright.
Done, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, nice.
Um.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Uh, public comment? We have no public left. Any board business?
No, I have a question before we close this. If this lot has so many pre-existing problems and all the boards already know all these problems, why is this lot sold to them in the first place?
Because they were never, they were never held on separate title. Nobody, you, we can't, it would be a taking. The, the, look, they, they were, they were held in separate title, right? But they have common ownership. That created a bigger problem, right? If they at least were just merged by the, by the assessor onto one lot, then this would have been fixed. It would have been ironclad, right? But they weren't and they're not required to be and the village can't take a lot, right? It'd be a taking, literally, right? So basically you say, okay, they sit on separate titles and then what does it do? It creates a mess. It creates a bunch of question marks when you say, well, now what do we do, right? You know, you want to create, you know, you want to, you want to take, you know, you want to take this historic structure, which apparently is not gonna, is not gonna last anyway. Which I don't find hard to believe, but that's a separate discussion. Um, and then, and then put a residence on a lot that is, is not supposed to be considered in its current size, right? For zoning purposes, it's this, it's this, you know, it's this, you know, ninety six foot wide lot instead of forty eight, right? So that's very different. So, but they're sold. I mean, we're not, the village can't control the ownership of property. The village can, you know, the village can put code that overlays that and says, here's what you can do with it, right? That's what land use is. And that's, and that's what we're looking at, but the problem, you know, the best thing would have been that the kids could have got along and merged, and merged the lots. Um, but that didn't happen and so it's transferred. This is the fourth time it's transferred.
Yeah, okay.
It went to Perpetua, Sestino, Banker, and now to, and now to these folks.
The, 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 the barn itself, you know, whatever, the house or something, uh, the, the lot apparently has some space in there. So if they move it into the middle or something, it's doable. I mean, for size wise for a house in that lot is doable.
For a tiny house, yeah, yeah, which is what they want.
So. So it's up to the zoning board to, to say if this is okay or not. It's not to our board to decide if it's okay or not.
It's not unusual that the zoning board would ask the planning board for information and, or, and an informal review because they're not doing site plans, right?
It's in your code.
It's actually required as part of the, the, when you apply for a zoning variance, the zoning board has to pass the application to the planning board.
To the planning board.
For the planning board to provide an opinion.
And you guys have done this before in other, I'd say complicated variants. I mean, the fence, the shed.
Okay.
You know, that doesn't need it, but there's been a couple of other applications since I've been here.
But I'm just wondering because there are, I'm very new to this, but I'm looking at the possibility, the, the things I could get my hand on. If, if the house itself will fit into this lot without any problems with, you know.
It depends how you define problem, but I mean, lot coverage, yeah. If you can say, could you fit that house and conform to lot coverage? You're not eliminating problem. In no way are you eliminating problems.
You can meet the setback requirements. You can meet the lot coverage requirements.
You can meet the, all the one setback. I, I don't know, I actually haven't, I actually did a schematic of it, but I didn't. I think I, I think what I did on mine is I showed the largest house you could put on the lot and still maintain a front, a rear, side, and then smaller front yard. But they want, it's a pretty small house, so, you know, and that's, you know, look, I mean, if I were to do this, it would be, it would, you know, John would probably be crazy. We'd have, you know, pages of wear as statements to say this, to, to distinguish as to why this is different. But in no way does it eliminate non-conformity. It's creating non-conformity.
Yeah, yeah.
And no one will convince me that it's not creating non-conformity because the zoning enactment of sixty seven eliminated the non-conformity.
It totally creates non-conformity.
The question is, and our advice to the zoning board, you know, here at night is, if you were going to entertain this, right? You know, putting aside whether or not I would entertain it, but I'm not zoning, what, what would be the best possible outcome? And in my mind, and I think any kind of reasonable thinking person would say, at least get as much conformity as you can. So that way, if there is backlash, we, you know, we had a very lengthy, expensive lawsuit for, what was it, two inches of a shed height? I mean, you know, so I mean, things can trigger consequences. We're not supposed to talk about those consequences, fear of those consequences. But what we can certainly talk about is, I understand the code. I read the code. Aaron needs to read the code, right? Cause he needs to understand that merger clause to say, well, these are one. One, but not one is a little hard to understand, but once you accept the fact that ownership is separate from zoning, it's very clear. It's one lot.
They own a share in a lot.
That's a, that's a, that's kind of the stretch that's, I think, difficult.
That's the mess, yeah, I mean, and, yeah, cause, cause you shouldn't, you would hope you wouldn't create that mess, but it's here, here we are, right? So, you know, so we, that's what we're being asked to do.
We are here and we are not here at the same time.
Yeah, exactly. You know, they're always, even, even, even the, even the Matanzas never joined them, you know, probably because they didn't feel any need to. They thought they're gonna be there forever. You know, Perpetua's a family member, Sestino's a family member, it just kept traveling down the family until it didn't. You know, and so I think that nobody was, nobody was thinking that far ahead. And who's thinking, you know, when I'm dead, I'm, I'm gonna worry about your zoning problem, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but.
Well, my, yeah.
People buying a, a, a new piece of property, you know, a lot of the things they don't know or they're not digging into the things and then they wind up.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not entirely happy with hearing that I'm, I'm aware they couldn't get, you know, a building permit, but I, we just didn't get the full story. Right? I mean, that's not, you know, that's really, you know, it's always buyer beware, right? Whatever you're buying, right? Am I really getting what I think I'm buying? So I would want to know, i- i- if I'm buying a non-conforming lot, I would, I would, I would certainly know, I would know, and I, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, I look into everything, as John Walls knows this, when I consider purchasing something. You know, I'll spend whatever it takes to figure out what's going on, right? I had a really weird, weird, weird property that was, um, upstate, but. So you gotta do that. You gotta do that homework because you can say, I don't know what I'm buying, right?
Right, but.
If you, if, if in the code, it says seventy five by seventy five, if you're led down the path of it being a subdivision in eighty four, well, then get the subdivision plan map. But to proceed without any of that information, you do that, you do that at risk.
Yeah, but what you, what you want to do is.
And that's their risk to take. I mean, it's not, it's not up for me to tell them.
But is, is that, all right, John, is that something that, if the code says this isn't permit, this isn't buildable? And if.
It's not.
And so, and if they buy it and it's not, and the code says it's not buildable, what kinds of, what kinds of right to build on that does somebody have? It sounded like earlier, maybe, I don't know if you, was it you who said it? Were you talking about the, the wanting to develop?
Self-created hardship? I mean, they've certainly created their hardship.
Well, yeah.
But that doesn't necessarily knock them out from getting variance and they can certainly apply for a variance, but they're not entitled.
They're not entitled to it.
No, no.
No, it's a risk reward thing. If, if you, if you purchase a piece, piece of property and know that it's non-buildable, I'll give you a good example. My brother lives in Bourbon County. He lives on an area that's a kind of oval shape. In the middle of the oval was a two and a half acre lot that was landlocked, right? A friend of my brother's future father-in-law bought the property and gave it to them as a wedding present, right? Could not be built on because you had no access, right? So he paid ten thousand dollars for two and a half acres in Bourbon County, which was dirt cheap, but he was taking a risk, alright? They fought it and fought it and fought it and couldn't get any access anywhere. So they ended up selling it to an immigrant family for five thousand dollars. Now, these guys came in and they said to one neighbor, I'd like to buy five foot of your property and I'll pay you ten thousand dollars. I'd like to buy five foot of your property and I'll pay you ten thousand dollars. Now, they have the biggest, one of the biggest lots in the whole town.
For five thousand.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, you have to, you have to think outside the box a little bit to be willing to take the risk.
Yeah.
Because at that particular time, a quarter of an acre lot in that town was selling for two hundred thousand dollars. So they got two and a half acres for five thousand.
Why did the other, why did the former owner who was gifted the, the lot not?
Not try to get access?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably pissed off the neighbors or something, you know?
Yeah.
You know, it, it becomes an issue of how much work, how much effort do you want to put into something?
Yeah.
And sometimes the effort for certain people just isn't worth it, you know?
I guess the reason I ask that is I just, I, I always, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to balance this, this question in my mind of like the, you know, they own this property, you know, somebody owns a parcel of property just because they own it, are they entitled to build on it if?
No.
No, you can't, but.
Need the variances.
But my, my.
Whether they get them?
Yeah.
No, it's, no, it's quite clear. You are not entitled to build.
You are not entitled to get them and you have to apply.
If you're managing to the extreme and don't hope and don't pray, then it's an unbuildable lot.
And so in this, so in this case, it, it all is reliant, I mean, it's all a question of whether or not the, the zoning board.
Does EBA will, okay.
At this time is interested in granting those variances.
Does the zoning board take into account neighbors' opinions?
Yes.
Okay, so, I don't know.
I'll have to go through a public hearing process.
Exactly, public hearing.
Yeah, the rental is concerning as well, what their impacts as well. It's not something that we have purview over, but, you know, I mean.
I mean.
Impacts can be different, yeah.
I mean, there's no land use difference between somebody who owns and somebody that rents.
No, no, no. Again, speaking of these things, we're not to speak to, which is, you know, concerns, right? Which is that when people are unhappy, whether it's two inches of a shed or a rotating cast of, you know, characters coming through this house that's ten feet from your house, right? You know, say it were to be an Airbnb, right? I mean, that, you know, that, those impacts are very, very different when you have people you don't recognize on a weekly, daily basis, you know, ten feet from your house.
You'd want a stereo restriction.
A what?
A stereo restriction.
Oh, that's right. We've got one of those by us because there's a big one by us and so it attracts parties. And it's, they're really loud because it's like a five, six bedroom house, you know, so.
Party house. Well, this is, this looks very, very small. Is it?
It's one bedroom, yeah.
Oh, it's a one bedroom house, okay.
But.
So are they Airbnb-ing it? Is that what?
No, it seems to be they're renting.
She said tonight, it's a, it's.
Her parents?
A rental for her mother.
Yeah, yeah.
Eventually, eventually, she said they're gonna rent it and eventually her parents are moving up from Florida.
Yeah, they're, they're snowbirds, basically.
Snowbirds.
Snowbirds, I guess, they call them.
Sunbirds, they're heading north.
How does our code treat Airbnb? Is it prohibited?
I don't know. I remember having this conversation with the building inspector three or four years, three years ago. And I can't remember what we concluded, but I don't think it's specifically addressed in your code.
It's probably not because Airbnb's.
Well, the, the mechanism of Airbnb is like the.
Short-term rentals, yeah.
But, but as a short, like the question of short-term rentals.
Silent, they're not prohibited, they're just not addressed.
So, but then also the owner has to stay in the same building.
Well, that's what, that's, that's what would be concerning is that, you know, is that.
Short-term rentals and they're only permitted on Route nine. They're only permitted up on Route nine D. And it's because when the code was, code was adopted, there was.
Orange, orange weather.
Springs, I know.
A lot of towns and villages have regulations on Airbnbs now, so, and I remember talking about that and providing a copy to the building inspector years ago.
Do you know, do you know, have you heard, what, what communities have legislation governing?
The, well, the town of Blooming Grove has banned them altogether.
Oh, smiling, okay.
We just invented something new. Um, in Jersey Shore, um, where the people renting out of their houses and stuff as Airbnb, now the government is putting extra eleven percent of tax.
A tax? I think a tax is reasonable.
So how about?
But people are angry at saying.
Um, yeah, they can regulate, you know, the number of times you can do it per year, the number of residents, you know, they require an inspection from a building inspector because, you know, certain fire safety issues. And you have people that aren't familiar with the house. So they limit the number of people, the number of.
Parking and issues.
Yeah, if you limit the occupants, that'll kind of take care of the traffic and the parking. So there's, um, I'll, I'll see if I can find a nice.
It would be good to, to be able to look at that and I'm sure, or it's code update looking, the code update committee must be looking at how to address that.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure everybody's gonna have to.